Here she is right now. Mr. Riddick?
Oh, you didn't have anything.
Oh, wait, I have one thing. Come on, it's election year, Andy.
That was another one.
Really? What a shock! I had no idea. Oh, you mean it's this year?
Yes.
Holy smoke!
That's probably... Okay, all right.
How many were meeting? We have six, I think.
There's at the senior center, Marcus. There was some money that was set aside for locker rooms there. Our understanding that it was for the women's locker room, $250,000. If you could double check on that. Nothing has happened there. And I have a contact of a lady who'd like to have an answer as to what the status is of that. And also, there's a request for more handicap parking at the senior center. So if you could deal with that. Here's her name and her phone number. Make sure that she's contacted with an answer. Great. And also, if we could look at outdoor gym equipment there. We can talk about that offline. Mr. Riddick?
Thank you. There's a sign supposed to be, it is actually under construction at Chapel Street and Tywhor Drive in Huntsville. Got a call from the contractor today and somehow he believes that we're dragging our feet in public works between engineers and architects of public works that are keeping that from being done.
So what's the corner?
It's at Chapel and Tywhor Drive.
He actually stopped working.
Yeah. Why did it stop working?
He stopped working.
It didn't. Yeah, and he believes he's having a problem, so...
I don't know.
Yeah, so anyway, I'm gonna call him back. I guess you guys can get into it and maybe you'll call me back. Also, and this is, I'll just let that one go. But I guess everybody around the table is gonna do the same thing. They wanna thank the chief wives and the fire department and how they responded to that fire out in Willoughby recently. A lot of times when we think about public safety, we think about our police department, gentlemen. But the fire department, you know, does a great job and a lot of times they don't get the, you know, because in that, I've catching the bad guys. But when they go to work, they go to work. And so I just wanna thank them, you know, for what they did this last weekend.
Thank you for mentioning that. It was absolutely heroic what went on down there. We also got some help from our sister city. That ought to be the subject of, I mean, we ought to, that's gotta be printed someplace. HRT joined in with the buses. And I think we all got the thing from Laurie, but I don't know that the rest of the world saw it, so that needs to be, that's a story that could be told.
Yes, and Chief Wise is prepared to do a briefing even tonight if council would like it.
But I mean, I think we need to create a story. I mean, we need to communicate in our own way to our citizens about that and this working agreement we have with the beach and people jumped in, but especially our firefighters. Mr. Wynn?
Yeah, a couple things. We all got the letter from, what is it, Claims Events or whatever, tent party rental thing group that we're using a higher-priced enforcement company. I don't know the details, but probably a story behind the story, you don't know, Marcus, about...
Mr. Wynn, it's a private event. It's not our...
It was insinuated at least that they recommended using enforcement company that costs more money. So I just, you know, as I say, it might be, okay, well, this, I would hope that we wouldn't, you know, we wouldn't use as many Norfolk people as we could for these type things. Other thing, it's been, and I know we talked about before, the HR UBS bills, but they spike up and they spike down. There's something going on. You know, tough people have $200 bill one month and an $85 bill the next month. Doesn't bother some people, but it's really hard on, hard on us.
When you, I have a number of people that I've been working with, and if you send the people that are concerned about the bills to our, Kristen will rectify all of it and she'll change it. And it is due to, it depends on how far up you are in the next block, you know, for the billing, so that at one point it's up high and then the next time, even using the same usage, you're way down because you're down lower in that block. But if people don't want that kind of inequity each month, they'll change it and make it average.
So the same usage would have a $180 bill one month?
Depending on where you are in that billing cycle. Kristen would explain it to me, because I've had dozens of people I've sent on. And we...
Well, we don't, the whole...
So anyway, she'll average it if, you know, if we want citywide for it to be average, I guess we could do that.
And we can do a public outreach on that.
I think we need to let people know what's going on. We don't need her talking to...
I know, because she's doing it individually.
Kind of protecting...
We need to hear it here, because I don't understand, you know, what you're talking about. I'd like to see...
Because I was so clear in my discussion.
And, very well, I believe you finished.
The last thing is, in Ocean View area, especially on the east beach side, we have no boat-launching facilities. I guess the closest thing, Tommy, it will do then. I know we bought some property at one time, I think adjacent to the bridge, and we were looking to maybe put in a facility there. Private mariners have all closed theirs, so someone recreational boating, right, trying to get out to the bay. We need to look into how we can help that situation, because there are a lot of people down there that need to be able to get in and out of there. If we could, if we could, I think we still own that property.
We think we did too, but at some point we determined that it wasn't feasible or something.
Well, it may not be feasible. Can we revisit it and then see? If not there, where?
We bought it with the purpose of having the boat. Most of it will be with, where the floodgate would go in, in that area. I know there's some traffic issues on how, well, I think it's doable, but Public Works came back and said no to that area, but there's a pretty nice-sized piece of land there.
There's a big-sized piece of property there, and I think we just need to look at. The last thing, we need to get on our radar, and maybe not for this budget, but some budgets after looking at our animal, our pet, whatever, animal recovery center. They're doing, it's an old facility with volunteers, really, I mean, it's clean and it's well-kept. I think the people actually come in today, tonight to talk about it, but we need to get it on our radar. It's probably the least modern, least capable of handling what we do, facility and ham to run. I know we have budget problems, but we can start planning as we do go out in a couple of years and get it on the radar.
Letters also recommend that there's a staffing problem.
Yeah. Staffing is, the numbers is way down.
We didn't have really dedicated volunteers. We'd be in big trouble.
Thank you. Did you want to add something, Mark?
Yeah. Barclay spoke about the water bills, but I had asked Marcus who could get a presentation on our water systems, distribution, safety. You know, there's thought that we could have some type of terrorist attack. I remember after 911, Herbica was a member of the council then, and our, down at Moore's Bridges, they had, I mean, people would just walk in into the water claim back then, and so they kinda tightened it up. And also, I guess it was West Virginia last year, year before last, that had an incident that caused a lot of pollution, and that river flowed into Lake Gaston. And we take last, you know, water from Lake Gaston and treat it for Virginia Beach. So I'd also like to know what kind of precautions, you know, that we take, or how quickly we could recognize of water pollution that if it came to us, you know, how we would treat it? Are we prepared to treat contaminated water so it won't affect the water we're sending to Virginia Beach and other places?
We're working on that, and we could do that as early as the next time we can get it to council.
Sure. Maybe also get all of its water.
What would it be? A fair amount of money.
Time for them to get thirsty.
I know we're not hearing from Brian today, but I was disturbed to read that as crucial as our stormwater needs are, that the state is apparently considering removing that funding from the budget on the state level. I hope we're doing everything we can and we're on top of that, because this area particularly is stressed with stormwater needs. And, I mean, are we aware of this, that this funding that the editorial talked about? Kristi, ever?
Yes, we are, yes.
All right. Secondly, I would like to have at some point an update, whether it's just sent to me virtually about the, our arts programs that the article in the paper talked about with the debt, and when that program is resolved, and, you know, we come up with a solution for that. And...
I think we all...
Yes. And then, thirdly, I know, you know, we're adding things to the budget, but when we as the city are looking to be economic drivers and attracting businesses, it is crucial that we have an up-to-date internet service like Virginia Beach has, we had to do the article that was in the paper. I know the article said that we have some money that is, we put aside toward getting to that. If we could have some kind of update on where we are on that. Again, if everybody's interested in it, we could have an update here, or if you just send us a memorandum, but I think we really need to take this seriously. I know, Marcus, that you do, but whatever we can do to help push that process along, I think is really crucial in us remaining competitive.
I agree. I agree, especially too with Norfolk Air, because there's a lot of times that Norfolk Air is not working. And it shouldn't be, I mean, you should be able to go on there any time and find information. And there's a lot of times when the system is, I don't know, is dead or not, whatever's not working.
We're prepared to, so the, so I'll leave the article alone for a little bit. In terms of what we're doing in the city, all of our facilities have broadband. But what we attempted to do with the half a million dollars that was set aside in the budget for this year is really start to focus on our businesses, our schools, our neighborhoods. So we have made progress, and I would like to bring that back to council to discuss, okay?
Thank you.
So you're saying we're prepared for our schools? Our schools are prepared.
What I'm saying is that we're not gonna leave schools out of this discussion. It just won't be a business discussion. We have to think about the schools and the neighborhoods also.
Okay.
All right. Ms. Johnson?
Marcus, in the past, I've mentioned about Franklin Arms, the senior citizen facility on Princess Anne Road, and providing them with a couple of crosswalks, especially with the bus situation across the street and with the speeding on Princess Anne Road, that somehow we would do a study and look into Princess Anne Road as a whole. Starting from Tywhor Drive, usually, from Git leading up to Tywhor Drive, the 25 miles per hour speed limit is observed. Once you cross over Tywhor Drive, it's a whole different world with the speed at a minimum of 50 miles an hour. And I'm not just saying to have a speed gun, but I've tested it a couple of times just to see how fast people were going. And it's a speed trap, and we have a new school coming up. We already have two schools there, so the speed is really, really fast. Also, getting some calls in reference to possible big bugs at Bravewood Senior Citizen Home out in the Tanner's Creek area. That's a huge concern.
Thank you.
Thank you. I also wanna piggyback off of Paul's comment about the fire department and the work that they did. Their job is not easy and it's not safe, and so kudos to you guys for doing such a good job and being ready and being prepared for what you had to do. I want to commend the chief for sending someone over to Restoration Church on Sunday night. They opened up a computer lab, and they're calling it the Norfolk Computer Training Center, I think is what they're calling it. And they had like no less than 20 laptop computers where they are going to offer job readiness training to the community based on recommendations from the Poverty Commission study that was done. And the report that came from that stating the need for technical training, technical skills training and things of that nature. So they're gonna be doing that at their church. And so the chief sent over someone from the police department, and the pastor said that whenever they have something, that there's always a member of the police department that comes to represent the police department at their church functions. And so I thought that was pretty cool, stuff we don't even know about that. Y'all do, and so it's pretty cool. I talked to James about this, but I just wanted to go on the record, because I know that Ms. Johnson and I have been dealing with these people for a while. And I say dealing with them in a good way, but in a way that if it was in any one of the neighborhoods that anybody in, around this table lives in, we would've had a cow by now. House on Middle Avenue that apparently, and I spoke to James about it, and he's working on it, but, you know, when people say they're gonna rehab a house, or when they say they're going to do something and they don't do it, and then what they do impedes the neighbors next door, that's a problem. And these people have been living, it's like Nightmare on Elm Street for them with this house, because there is not work being done to it. The guy apparently who owns it has stopped paying the contractor, and the contractor's not working, I can't blame him, but they are living in, the homeowners next door are living in a nightmare. And so we have gotta figure out a way that we can accelerate either a court action or a demolition action or something or another, so that when there are situations like this that happen, people are not literally just, you know, they've been dealing with this for a very long time. Yeah, it's been a long time.
And they live very close together. We're talking about...
Yeah, the houses are like really close together. Yeah. And so his construction work has been impeding on their house. The guy leaves, they don't hear anything from him, they don't know anything. I mean, it's just a nightmare for them. And like I said, if it was anybody else's house that sat at this table, we would've turned the neighborhood upside down by now. So, two things, two last things. City cars, people who drive them, make sure they don't get out of the car at night to go into someplace and leave their laptop on the front seat and their purse and stuff. That's a smash-and-grab opportunity, and since we're self-assured, we would like to prevent some of those things. There was a white tourist at the, what's that, it was the Walgreens, I think it was, last night, and it was dark. And I pulled up beside the car, and it was clearly marked a city car. And what I could see was what looked like a pocketbook and what looked like a laptop case in the front seat of the car. So we need to, you know, just be careful. Right. And then the last thing is, last week, we were talking about city raises and bonuses, and Bernard said that bonuses were taxed at the same rate as wage increases, but that's not true. Bonuses are taxed, I just had it, bonuses are taxed at a higher rate than wages are taxed. And so, again, this wage increase thing and the bonus thing, when y'all say to us that everybody's getting X, it needs to be that. It doesn't need to be some people this and some people that. And then, when we say, well, people can go online and see where they fall, that might be true if you work in an office, but not the public works people who may not have access or, you know, part-time people who may not have access to find that information. So I just want us to clean that wage increase thing up. That's it. So I got it.
Okay, three things. I'm gonna continue on my series of what makes Norfolk look ugly.
Door doors.
Yes, I talked about last time, the signs along Military Highway, Little Creek Road, which means Walvar, and I hope that we seriously look at doing a sign task force. And I forgot to mention as part of that is that we have these new requirements in which when drive-throughs come through, Terry Whibley's rule of more trees than have to go around a block eight. So these businesses come in and they do that, and then when a tree gets knocked over in a car accident, they don't replace it, or if a storm brings it. And so who goes back over to make sure that they have replanted a tree under our plan? Or if a signs, for example, Burger King on Little Creek Road had its entrance sign completely taken out two years ago, it still hasn't been replaced, and they took out two trees when they did it, and the trees haven't been replaced. But do we go back and look at it? But my next series is about wires on poles. And so if you go through high-density areas where there's a lot of apartments, because there's a lot of disconnects on cable and phone, I don't think, I know it's not Dominion Power, because the power cables aren't hanging, but if you look at these poles, just go straight down Ocean View Avenue, and you'll see where all these utilities have been disconnected or if a truck came through and snapped a line, they just leave them hanging. And then sometimes they use electrical tape and they wrap them around the pole, but they come out. And so if you're a runner or cyclist going down Ocean View Avenue on the cycle, you can actually get hit by one of those wires or clip one of them because of how they come out. And I meant to take pictures this morning on my way to work, but I didn't have a chance to do that, but I will, because I think you guys really need to see how bad this really is. If you just start from one end of Willoughby Spit and go all the way down to East Beach, so many of those poles just have wires hanging, and it's not just there, it's, like I said, it's major where there's high density, where you have a high disconnect rate, and they're just leaving them there. It's probably the phone and cable companies that are doing that. So I don't know how we can handle that as a city and what our rights are, but for safety reasons, it would be great if somebody went through and addressed that. And they're also now, they used to secure those lines through conduit against the pole, and now they're not even doing that. They're just running the wire straight down into the ground and not putting the conduit up attached to the pole to protect that wire from coming loose for somebody accessing it. Parking garage incident on this past weekend was the science fair at Nauticus, and all the attendees were told that they would only have to pay $2.50, because it was a Norfolk Public Schools event. When people were leaving the parking garage, apparently there was no attendant there, and the charges were $12, $12.50. So these were all of our public school kids who won their school science fairs that were going down there for that event. Apparently, a parking attendant, somebody kept on hitting the call button, and she got angry and came out and got into an argument with a parent. And then everybody was waiting in line. She used profanity at the parents and other people, told them to just pay the effin' bill and get out of there. The police were called to that event. The police officer felt like that she couldn't, or he couldn't handle the situation. He said, well, I can't take money, I don't have a box to collect it in. And eventually, somebody came out and just opened the gate and let everybody out. But whatever happened with that situation, I hope it's seriously investigated, and if that employee treated our customers that way, then there should be consequences for that, and look into the whole incident. But there should've been a parking attendant knowing that this big event was gonna be leaving, that, and if a special rate was announced at it, then we should've had somebody there that collected or to be able to handle the stamps of it.
Sure. We'll look into that at council's meeting as well as if you can, I'll talk with you about the list of attendees also.
Yeah. And then the East Beach Shops area, there is a water sewer line replacement going on on Pleasant Avenue. This, anybody who's had neighborhoods that's lived through this know that it's an ongoing, because they do it in phases. And sometimes a contractor doesn't get the next bid, so they've gotta shut down. In the meantime, there's paving and everything has to go on. But the East Beach Shops, which is a retail area, AJ Gators, Mojo Bones, and Sandfeller Cafe have all been impacted, because there really is no way to get into the shopping center anymore. They've closed off Pleasant Avenue, and they've closed off the U-turn if you're heading north on Shore Drive. And you can't go and make a U-turn anywhere else, because we've blocked it off for that special parking that's there, so you can't make a U-turn. And then if you try to get in the neighborhood, you can't come back into the shopping center because it's all blocked off. They've closed it all. But the business owners there have asked for help with a better traffic pattern. They know that this is gonna be long-term. It doesn't help either. They're renovating the shopping center at the same time that they're doing all this. And so there's no signage there that, there's one that says shopping center entrance, but if you're coming northbound, there's no way to get into it. And so they've all saw a decline in their sales the last two months, plus with winter, it's always low. But if there's anything that we can do to look at helping those businesses out, whether there's more temporary signs or better detour, that would be great. That's it.
I agree with your original point. You know, we have a very strict landscape ordinance, and I thought last year we budgeted somebody for a look back. If we make the people do what they're supposed to do, you finish, they get this certificate occupancy, they can pull it out, tear it down. We need somebody going back annually and being sure these properties are maintained properly and that the planned material isn't taken out, because, I know we talked about that.
I like it more than any.
Yeah, well, at least revisit every commercial property that's come online and left under our landscape ordinance and be sure they maintain these properties to the level that we want. It doesn't do us any good if they just let them go and let the weeds grow and trees get knocked over and don't get replaced.
Okay, just a couple of things. Marcus, could you give us a note on, did we ever get the street sweeper?
Yes.
Okay, could you just give us some feedback and the crew, that new landscaping crew out of the, you know, money we had left over at the end of the year, just...
Yes.
No, but put it in writing to us.
I do, I have it right here. So progress on all of the funds that were, that some were retrieved, yes, sir.
Okay, terrific. Secondly, I circulated a letter that Phil Smith sent me. Phil took me through his property the other morning. He's the guy who was doing the new anchor, the, where's the right name? Brickhouse, the anchor brewery, brick anchors. And he's got $2 million in it. I mean, and it's the old Jack, he's in a property that was, you know, sort of important to us, is the old Jack Quinn's, which is the first restaurant on Grammy Street we ever incentivized, hoping somebody would open another one, and it happened, and now he's in there. But this is really a good news story. I mean, says he couldn't find anything in Virginia Beach or Newport News. He's a 22-year Army veteran, and he and his wife came back here, and they found this place, and they were blown away with it and what's going on. Anyway, it's a great story. And he says our folks at EDA helped him, Mary Miller, Kevin Murphy, specifically, the whole group of folks, but take a look at it, at least, somebody thinks we're doing something right. And then, Marcus, I mean, I know Laurie sent us a note about this, the expansion at Centerra Norfolk General, but, I mean, I think there's a bigger issue here that we all ought to, you know, we ought to talk about how we plan all of this stuff. There used to be a medical campus planning group, which I guess still functions.
I was wondering, we have that in a couple years. It's Harry Lester leg we had.
Yeah, but, and I applaud Centerra, and I would hope we can get them in here.
Sure.
Because, I mean, that's $199 million investment. I don't know how many new jobs are there, but that would, you know, that would be nice to know. But I don't think the council in years has sat back and said, you know, and taken a good look at, between Centerra Norfolk General, the medical school, the King's Daughters, the Jones Institute, I mean, just what we have here, there's, one of our sister cities is trying to push themselves as a place for biomedical research. And we have all of these foundational blocks for something like that to occur right here. That we ought to, at least we ought to understand it ourselves, how many people work there, how many people are doing research there? I mean, we could spend a few hours, and they would probably love to come over here and tell us about that. And, but at the same time, it's a huge economic generator force, it's a quality of life issue, life and death issue, actually, but we haven't heard from them. And the notion that Laurie had to drop us a note, we should be a part of a planning, I mean, that, I don't know who used to, we used to rotate who was the chair of that group. And it sort of circulated among either the medical school or Norfolk General or the city. And a lot of it had to do with parking, I mean, it had to do with parking and with traffic. But it seems to me if one of our institutions is gonna make a $200 million investment in the city... in the city, that we ought to have an opportunity at least to sit there at the table and enjoy it with them somehow, you know? You know what I mean? We might be able to help them too.
Sure.
Paul, they did make a reservation to Terry to be here.
Oh, I know, and they've offered to make one to me, I mean, but that's not the same as making it to all of us.
I understand.
And I'm talking about a much bigger look.
Yeah, but they, to their credit, they've been good community parkers, they've met with West Kent, they met with Gant Civic League, Gant whatever, and Neighbor League, and the Company of Gent Task Force, but it is a big deal.
I agree, they've been great, they're great folks, but...
It's pretty, it's pretty spectacular what's gonna go on.
I know, I've talked to Kurt, and I, you know, but so, I mean, it's a great news story, but let's let everybody understand what's going on, and let's, and I think we ought to, you know, really understand what's happening on that entire campus over there, which is, which is huge.
Well, they could have elected to have gone anywhere.
Oh, I know, believe me.
And that's really the key, is that, I mean, they, they have hospitals all over the state.
I just don't know why they accept, oh, I know, they've got, they've got...
Well, this, in fairness, Sandy, they actually really good, but I'm not, I'm not taking anything away from, but because of the level three trauma, that's why this has to...
And it was in their news release, they have patients that come in here from 28 different states and foreign countries.
That's what this is all about, because it's been a tertiary center, and it's now a quaternary center, and it's all about the fact that small hospitals can no longer do these things, so they have to come to another place, and this is what this will be.
They could have expanded the beach hospital, they could have expanded out at Princess Anne, they elected to do it here, and that's the key.
And they have the medical school here, they have the interns, the residents.
And the children's hospitals.
Yeah, and the children's hospitals.
Which is not theirs, but they were, they were closed.
We just don't spend enough time talking about what a good thing that is. And together, I mean, it is a big deal out there, what that would happen, so the medical schools is getting, you know, they're getting their foundations growing, I mean, their quality of what they're doing over there is improving as well. Okay, thank you, Marcus. Okay, well, we did it. All right, we're gonna break for dinner and then come back, and do you wanna say anything now, Marcus, or you wanna say?
No, I think, Mayor, the break for dinner, and then we come back and we have Captain Beaver, who's here.
Okay.
The City of Norfolk agreed, along with Cities of Virginia Beach and Chesapeake, to begin the joint land use process in 2004, to look at what constituted compatible development in and around the airfields of Chambers Field, Oceana, and Ventress. And as a result of that process, and it's, needs to be, we need to be very clear that the City of Norfolk, the City of Virginia Beach, the City of Chesapeake, and HR PDC, along with the Office of Economic Adjustment, were the partners in this joint land use process. This was a partnership that developed this, this was not people coming down from the Pentagon and dictating to the cities what had to happen, this was us working collaboratively to determine what the best outcome would be for our community. And, as this says, that the goal here is protecting public health, safety, and welfare of citizens in Norfolk as well as of the area. The 2005 land use study was completed in 2005, the Planning District Commission prepared to file a report, the City of Norfolk approved the report by resolution in May of 2005, accepting the recommendations and determining that that would be city policy. It was revised again in 2010 to reflect some minor changes in the air operations, and then, the report you have in front of you, it comes in two parts, you have the map, and then there's a very detailed report that is part of it, and I believe that we have provided a copy of that to you previously in this material. So, the, is, when, in March of '13, when we adopted Plan Norfolk 2030, the entire JALUS recommendations were incorporated by reference, and then with specific language into the, into the plan. It includes the map, which you see here on the screen, which is essentially a smaller version of the map that you have in front of you. It delineates the accident potential zones, as well as the noise contours and the noise zones, not only from the military field, but also from Norfolk International Airport, also appears on the map. And the key to what we're talking about in the application, and the key to why both the planning staff and the planning commission have recommended denial, is in the actions calling to not support any proposed increase in intensities or uses that are, would be incompatible with being in either an accident potential zone or in a noise zone. And we continue to coordinate our planning activities with our military partners, and with that, introduce to you Captain Beaver, who is the commanding officer of Naval Station Norfolk.
Good evening, Mayor Frame and City Council members. For the record, my name is Captain Doug Beaver, I'm the commanding officer of Naval Station Norfolk, and my business address is 1530 Gilbert Street, Suite 2000, Norfolk, Virginia, 23511. Thank you for the opportunity to be part of this discussion this evening. I'm here to provide some background information on our air installations, compatible use zones, often referred to as ACUs, and the 2005 joint land use study, also known as JALUS, and how these are implemented in the City of Norfolk's Plan 2030. I will also briefly discuss the Navy's position on the special exception application for banquet hall at 9605 Granby Street. The purpose of the ACUs program is to protect the health, safety, and welfare of those living and working in areas surrounding the base from noise and hazards through compatible development in the airport environment. The program was instituted by the Department of Defense in 1970 to address the problem of land development surrounding military air installations. The US Navy has been doing ACU studies for decades. Recently, these studies have highlighted the encroachment of incompatible uses and the potential impact on current and future operational capability. The ACU study provides for the development and implementation of a plan to determine those land areas for which development should be significantly influenced by the operation of the airfield. These land areas are then designated as the ACUs for that installation. Again, this program was implemented to protect the health and safety of those who live and work in the areas surrounding the base. An accident potential zone, or APZ designation, does not infer that a crash will occur, just that there is a stronger potential because of the frequency of flight operations in the airspace above. During 2015, nearly 54,000 flight operations were conducted out of Naval Station Norfolk. While we are very proud of our safety record, accidents are a possibility. Another important study is the joint land use study, which was conducted by the HR PDC on behalf of, and in cooperation with the Cities of Chesapeake, Norfolk, and Virginia Beach, and the United States Navy. This study, conducted under the auspices of the Department of Defense, Office of Economic Adjustment, addressed land use issues associated with the operation of Naval Air Station Oceana, Naval Auxiliary Landing Field, Ventress, and Chambers Field, formerly known as Naval Air Station Norfolk. The final Hampton Roads JALUS report was endorsed by the Policy Group on April 21st, 2005, and City Council approved and adopted May 17th, 2005. ACU studies are updated periodically. The 2009 ACUs compared the 1999 noise contours to the 2009 contours that used flight operations projected out to 2015. The primary focus of the 29, excuse me, 2009 study was an updated aircraft noise contours and APZs for the installation, and an evaluation of land use compatibility against the noise contours and APZs. The compatibility, excuse me, compatibility assessment considered both current and proposed land uses and zoning for the City of Norfolk. The 2009 ACU study provided recommendations to Navy and community planners, as well as the general public, on ways to promote land use compatibility that is consistent with both the goals of the ACU's program and the community's land use goals. Lastly, I want to touch on a document I'm sure you're familiar with, Plan Norfolk 2030. In 2013, City Council adopted Plan Norfolk 2030, which contains action statements within the identifying land use strategies chapter, which states, "Do not support any increase in intensity of uses located in incompatible noise and accident potential zones, and seek opportunities to reduce the intensity of those incompatible uses." Plan Norfolk 2030 incorporated the ACUs into the city's zoning ordinance, and does not support increased densities in those, in these areas. The Navy's, the Navy supports this position. In regards to this special exception application for a banquet hall at 9605 Granby Street, the proposed banquet hall would be located within the 65 to 70 dB day-night average noise zone, just 1.5 miles northeast of Chambers Field, and directly underneath a major departure corridor within accident potential zone two. City planning staff and planning commission both view the request as an increased development at this site, and an unnecessary encroachment upon Navy operations as supported by the installations 2009 ACU study and Plan Norfolk 2030. The Plan Norfolk 2030 Comprehensive Plan made a conscious effort to maintain and enhance land use patterns to protect Chambers Field, the Navy also supports this position. I would like to close by emphasizing that the Navy and the City of Norfolk have a fantastic relationship built on respect and trust. We look forward to continuing that relationship as we work through this issue and any others that arise. And before I finish, I would just like to highlight the fact that there were Navy Fire and Emergency Units that responded to support the City of Norfolk Fire Emergency Units out in Willoughby Spit, as well as the fire that occurred in Larchmont approximately 10 days ago. So, the cooperation and trust from the City of Norfolk and the Naval Station is fantastic. And at this time, I'd like to open it up to questions.
Captain, thank you. The, if we could, Captain, and I'm looking at your, the map that has been provided to us, as you said, that we've been reviewing it. As I look to the north, the northeast, as you said, that particular corridor where we're talking about.
Yes.
And I am familiar with both of these areas, as it goes directly to the east. The prime, is the primary traffic pattern, one that goes directly to the east, in and out, versus the pattern that goes to the northeast?
So, Naval Station...
If you can tell us, and I understand if you cannot.
I cannot provide numbers this evening, so Naval Station Norfolk has an 8,500-foot runway primarily oriented east-west as depicted.
Right.
So, any departure, typically the, if we have inclement weather, we're gonna be doing straight-ins, so we're gonna be using the corridor that's mainly east-west. However, primarily, we're doing visual flight operations, so that's when we use that corridor that goes across APZ two that you're, that you're referring to. So, anytime you see blue skies, or, you know, cloud decks above, you know, 3,000 to 5,000 feet, we'll be using a VFR pattern, which we'll use that corridor, but I can't provide a specific number.
That's fine.
Can I just add, ask you a question as part of this? Why is the Norfolk International Airport APZ zones so much smaller than the military's APZ zones? I'm just, because I live by the airport, I live at the end of, in Baybury's Point, and on a foggy day, it sounds like an airplane is going to crash into my house from Norfolk International. And I look on here, one, my house is not in the noise zone, and two, it's nowhere, there's no blue anywhere even close to my house, but I can tell you those planes fly right over it. So, why does the military have such a bigger area in the Norfolk International? And it might not be your answer, because I don't, I don't understand why their blue zone is not particularly over Paul and your side over Military Highway, this way those planes come in over those houses off of North Hampton, I just don't understand why none of that's in blue.
Well, there's basically no APZ one nor two at Norfolk International. We have the clear zone, which we see, but there is no APZ one nor two. I guess that would be my question, is why do you have an APZ one or two at Norfolk International?
I would need to defer to the planning commission on that, I was not there for the formulation of those APZs. I will say, the one difference is, is we have rotor-wing aircraft, so you're gonna see an expanded use of the APZs because of the rotor-wing approaches into Naval Station Norfolk, which you do not have, obviously, going into Norfolk International. But I can't speak to your question as to why no APZs were incorporated in Norfolk International.
And I have one last question, as I look at your map, APZ one extends to your DNS peers, am I correct?
Yes.
Do you still use the DNS peers?
Yes.
Do you not? Why haven't you stopped using those?
Well, just like the City of Norfolk, we have everything that was grandfathered in prior to the incorporation of the 2005 and 2009, we won't seek to increase anything, much like the Fleet Park Little League was removed from the clear zone a couple of years ago, so...
Trust me, we know.
Yes. So, it's the increase or any equity that we would look at, so on the base, we're not gonna do that if it would increase, but certainly anything that's grandfathered, we will continue to use.
Thank you, I appreciate you.
Marcus, in regards to the Pretlow Library, how do these ordinances that were approved by the city, did the library come in between those or what?
The library's grandfathered in, correct, right?
Even the additional millions of dollars we put into it?
Yes, sir.
So, the question I have about that is, last night, we had a meeting at Pretlow Library that had 50-plus people in it, Nansmith on the Bay, across the street, we had the Business Cafe, very successful Business Cafe, with almost 100 probably people in there. In a couple of weeks, and I, I'm not trying to start anything, but the St. Patrick's Day Parade on Granby Street, which is in all of APZ one and APZ two, is gonna have a couple thousand people that are gonna be standing out watching a parade.
Tens of them.
Yeah, lots. The Ocean View Beach Park, which is in APZ two, which is the same as the elegant Krista's group, we do how many events there on Fridays and Sundays with hundreds of people that there, so do we not, when we do the, so is the St. Patrick's Day Parade grandfathered in, so they could just keep on having all their, or so now, do we need to consider changing their whole route out of this? Because now, we're putting thousands of people's lives in danger of a potential crash that could happen. But, I'm just, that's where I'm, when we, when we look at these, I like to look at everything and take that into consideration, Northside Middle School at any time could have an assembly, you know, with parents there showing up for band events, and yes, the school's existing there, but I, I just have some small issues, I respect the military, I respect the process that happened here, but I just, I see some disconnect. A few years ago, Sylvia Mancone proposed huge 385 apartments on Second Bay Street, 10 stories high, and got a letter from the military, this was four years ago, four or five years ago, allowing that to be developed, you know, over there, and I just, I think there's a lot of inconsistencies, and I know it's not your fault, there's change of command that happens as well, but I think then we have to start looking at everything, then, and, when it comes to this, because if we're gonna treat this business owner this way, the, you know, the max amount of people that would be in her building is 80 people at one time, but we have all these other events and things that are happening around this area, whether short-term, almost all of her events are short-term rentals, there may happen one Saturday, it may not happen the next, there's a catering business that will happen from that, I just, I have some issues with that, Paul, I just, I respect the military, but I just think that we're not consistent, then, with what we're doing as a city with other things that are happening.
Well, there was a time when the City of Norfolk was over 300,000 people, and a great number of them resided in Ocean View, we were basically a bedroom community between Little Creek and Naval Station, and it was highly, it was intensely developed, I mean, at one point, I guess back in the late 80s, I mean, you could put 36 units on an acre or something like that, a property way back, way back then, and we downzoned a lot of that, but this made this one incident seem insignificant in the, in the development of things at Ocean View, but if the Navy started to discern a pattern of development that appears to be a creeping encroachment towards their naval installation, then, you know, then that's, that's what happened at Oceana, I think that's a good example, that's why this long, long planning, planning process took, took place between Chesapeake, which is the home of Ventress, Norfolk, which has Chambers, and Oceana and Virginia Beach, so we could, so the communities working with the Navy could try to, to stop this encroachment, this slow encroachment occurring at the naval bases, so everybody could live peacefully together.
Yeah, I understand. Yeah, I, I understand that.
And, and so if, and the city, by the way, has committed itself to this.
So that's, that was an existing building though, Paul, that had-
But, but it, it is an existing building, but-
It had a bike shop in it, and I, when the bike shop was there, they used to organize, cyclists would all get there, there'd be 50-plus cyclists that would sit outside of that building waiting to, so what would make that not grandfathered compared to Pretlow?
Well, first of all, this, this, the 80 folks, it's something like six times more per acre folks that have been, that would be using this facility than was agreed to in our plan. But Marcus, you want to mention?
Let me, let me say a couple things. You know, I, you know, when I think of encroachment, I think of something new.
Right.
And, and this building has been there, you know, all the time. And Captain, first of all, I want to thank you for your service, you know, to our country and to what you do here. But how were you flagged on this? Did you get a letter from the planning commission or what? How did you become?
So Naval Station Norfolk has a community plans and liaison office, so they're specifically tasked Mr. Steve Jones to liaise with the city and be informed of city plans. So that relationship exists and we share information on what goes on. We're zoning around the air station, and that's what, how we found out about it.
So I think one issue that's very important with R1, and we did not put this in the cover letter last time, and we tried to make sure that it's in the cover letter this time, is that for the property that we're talking about, this conversation would not be occurring right now if it was a compatible use, so the same density. So right now, there is what we would consider low-density occupancy levels. So my understanding is that there are tens of opportunities that can go into this place, this space. The reason why we're having this discussion is because this banquet facility is a higher density, and the higher density is what has caused us to have the recommendations for denial. What I would propose to the council is that, you know, both the planning department as well as economic development can work with the, the current owner about what are some of the uses that are compatible, that can go into the building, as well as the applicant, what are some opportunities in other places throughout the city that would be compatible. So that's really why we're here. It's, this is going from, you know, this use to an assembly use, and that's a higher density.
But I think for us, it's, the issue is that, it's that, and each time, it's, I'm going to use the word temporary or transient in nature, it's not as if we're, we're building, which I would, of course, not vote for, homes or things like that, even, you know, permanent institutions, but this is something that may have, you know, a meeting on a Tuesday night, not have anything else for, until Saturday. That's really what, that's how I see this as being different. And I appreciate the grandfathered in, but as the Navy has elected, by all means, and, you know, and I appreciate it, that, but the DNS peers are still in use, and that's billions of dollars at the, at the end of their runway in APZ one. We have elected to move, or we were forced to move the, the, out of the area involving the children and the, and the baseball diamonds, yet we have, at the end of the runway, we have the Navy PX. For, it's, what's good for the goose is good for the game. It goes two ways. Now granted, I'm going to hear, well, those are also grandfathered. This being temporary in nature, maybe in transient in nature, is the only difference to me. I would never support anything that would affect APZ two or one if it was, if I saw that they were going to live there and it was going to be something that would put residents, or even something that was a full-time issue in nature. But this is slightly different, and it's as transient as anything Tommy has said. So I think that's the, where we have to look at it on a case-by-case basis. And I did read this, even though today, as you said, fairly close, and it does say, and when I read it, it says, "Local governments are encouraged to apply these guidelines in their land use decision-making processes." And I think that this shows the Navy that we are going through that process, and that it's causing consternation here at council. We take it very seriously.
We moved Pine Wall Station completely out of that area.
Well, you know, I mean, you-
Shows we're taking it seriously.
No, we are, and this is not a question of, I don't think it's nearly as gray as you would say. I mean, first of all, our planning department, our professionals recommended against it. The planning commission voted zero to seven against it. They also had a great-
That's not a gauge, the planning commission's not a gauge.
Did the planning department-
Okay, now take all the planning department and the planning commission. The process that we had in place to give this council advice, the planning department, Tommy, I'll interrupt you later. Okay, wait until I finish, okay? Process that we have in place to give the city council advice on matters like this is the planning department with professionals, they come through a planning commission of citizens who give us their best advice, and then it is recommended to us by our city administration what we should do. The fact of the matter is, we've adopted the plan. The word encouraged is, is, I think that's a nice word, but we have committed ourselves to this plan, and this is seen as an encroachment by the Navy, and they've, and they've asked us to live up to our commitment that has been adopted in the plan. And that's, not to mention the parking and all the other stuff that I think the planning commission took into place, a lack of it. So, okay, wait a minute, Tommy, you were going to say?
I was just asking, George, did, when the applicant came to the city, did they know at that point that this was an issue?
No, they did not. It was when they came, but, but the other thing is, they got started on this process before they realized that they needed to come to the city for the special exception because the assembly use, the alcohol sales.
So when the applicant comes to the city, we have now, we have a process in that warrants them of this potential when they come through?
And I'm sorry, Captain, the PX is just off the clear zone.
George, my question to you.
Thank you.
The number of hours, they, they want to be open like seven days a week, and they want to open at nine and close at 12, something like that. Before I actually read their use, I just thought it was a banquet hall where if somebody came in, they would go and get their ABC permit, like, what do you call that? Banquet license, banquet license, okay? If they reduced, if they reduced their hours, and it would be just strictly a banquet license, you know, use by use, somebody's having a wedding reception on Friday, as opposed to saying, we're going to open Sunday through Saturday, we're going to open from nine through 10. If they changed their use and became a banquet facility, and they only went in, you know, case by case, and, and if you, and usually if you're going in for wedding receptions and things of that nature, you might be going in there from four to eight or four to nine. Would the reduction in hours have any impact on our agreement with the Navy?
Can I jump in before you? I'm not trying to answer your question, but the other piece to having the hour flexibility, because I think we had this in some other discussion, thank you, about hours. Some people have morning weddings, and so they have morning receptions. And some people have morning, I mean, afternoon weddings and things like that. So I think we might be restricting their ability, you know?
I, I hear exactly what you're saying, and you're absolutely right. But if this individual wants to protect their investment that they put in there so far, then they would say, well, okay, we are available to accommodate you. That depends on George's answer, but we're able to accommodate you, you know, like from four to eight or, you know, seven into eight, 11 or something like that. If they didn't have those, that 12-hour span, George, you know, reducing hours to maybe four or five hours in an evening, what would that do?
Mr. Riddick, we would, we would still view this as an assembly use, whether for one hour or for 12 hours a day, it still is an assembly use. And because it's an assembly use, it represents an intensification in use above that of its previous use, which was a retail establishment. So, you know, our, our view, and Mr. Jones picked up on it, things like flower shops, book shops, you know, any one of, of dozens of, of retail opportunities, all of which would be considered to be exactly the same use as had been there before. But adding the ability to have an assembly, whether for one hour or, or 12 hours, changes that use, changes the use group in the building code as, as well.
Did they represent any kind of where they're going to park all these people? They got 12 parking places, they're neighbors, I've gotten a couple calls, Democrat Club, you know, surrounding, where, where would they park people? I think that was a big planning commission concern, as well as the Navy's.
Yeah.
Tennis office next door.
So Mr. Winn, we've, we, we have in, in our zoning ordinance, the ability to allow existing buildings to be reused and repurposed and not meet the current parking requirements. But this is a special exception. Therefore, and, and as I've pointed out many times before to you all, a special exception is not a right. A special exception is a privilege that you all choose to grant or not grant, and in choosing to grant it, you may add whatever conditions you feel are necessary to make sure that that privilege does not negatively impact the, the surroundings. In this case, while there is an opportunity in code to allow the fewer parking spaces, this is probably a good example where that is not an appropriate way to view this particular use in this particular location.
My question is to the captain. You might have answered this, you might not, but with all due respect, suppose five of us around this table decided we wanted to support this project, what message would that send? Would that be, you know, we, I think you used the, the term encouraged, would that make us, you know, bad, you know, participants in this contract or what? I mean, how would, how would the Navy view us? I mean, would you get up and leave?
I view you all with the utmost respect, Mr. Riddick. Your, your, your due diligence, due diligence tonight is, is encouraging. I think all the issues are on the table. I don't think that how the Navy views the decision is a marker one way or the other on the process tonight. I think all the issues are on the table for the council to decide with all the facts.
Thank you so much.
I have one question.
Thanks for putting it that way, by the way. Thank you. Thank you, Captain, too, without beating you up or anything, so just agree.
George, when you say, when you all talk about the increase in density and you talk about retail, and now you talk about assembly, are you basically saying that in an assembly hall, because of the numbers of people, that you would have more people in the assembly hall at one time than you would have all day in some kind of retail establishment? Is it, is that what I'm understanding, the numbers of people congregated at one time being, being the true, I mean, I know it's more people, but the, the numbers of them at one time being an increase in density issue?
So it's, it's not necessarily the, the number of people there at any one time, or whether, how that compares to, to how number of people that might be there on a day. We're, first of all, our basis is on a change in land use. So it goes from a land use of a retail establishment to a land use of an assembly, and that all by itself is, in, in the planner's view, an increase in intensity. Probably with the, the occupancy that has been requested as part of this special exception, I think you are probably accurate that there is very much the potential to have more people in the, the area at any given time for that use, as might be in the establishment during a day for some retail uses that, that might be there. Again, it all depends on what the retail use is and what their, the business model might be, but, but I think that's an, an accurate possibility. Yes, ma'am.
Just wanted to, one, one more thing, Paul. Just to let the captain know, we have been looking at these issues, and the Pine Wall Station project was delayed for almost two years as we went through and looked through the ACUs issues and moved the whole structure over and reduced the density by almost 100. I, I know of a person who went to planning department to take a duplex, I, I mean, a single-family home and wanted to put two houses on it, and they were told it was in an AP two zone, you know, and that citizen still has to write the move forward and let us decide if that's still a good use, but I know it's being addressed. And, you know, one of the things that I was going to ask for tonight, and I know we talked about the one-year or 18-month special exception, was that I think that this would be a good one to look at, is giving that 18-month to see how parking would be impacted. So if we were to vote on it, and whether it passed or failed, but to add that language to put a restriction on it, to see the impact on that parking if it went forward. But I, I think we are working on it, the issues. One of my concerns is, you know, we have limited development down in Ocean View, and these AP two and APZ two, AP one zones really limit some of our areas that we could do some development, and so, you know, we are watching it, and, and we do look at it, and this may just be a special exception in a sense, is that maybe we look at this one and then we move on, and the next one we may say no, because we, we understand that it will be a permanent use. Anyway.
Let me, you know, just politely disagree with you on that. This is a slippery slope you start down. Once you start saying, oh, we'll just let this one little one go, and the next one, that's what Virginia Beach, happened in Virginia Beach, they woke up one day and almost lost the entire Oceana field. This is not, by the way, something about, well, we didn't, we need more development. We're talking about, the Navy tells us, and our own plans tell us, about public safety, you know, and, you know, that's, I mean, that needs to weigh heavily on people when they make their votes about this thing. This is not just about a little more economic development. There are over 40 uses that property could be put to right now that does not require a change of zoning or any sort of, any action by this, by this body. This is, this is not a small thing we're being asked to do here, and I would urge you to, you know, make sure that you, everybody considers this seriously. Okay, thank you, thank you. We're going to go to closed session? Okay, whatever, okay, go ahead. We're not going to, are we going to go into closed session? Yeah, we are?
Move the members of council assembly closed meeting on February 23, 8:16, 5:00 PM. Purpose and on a clause of brief, section 2.2, national 37th Amendment, Freedom of Information Act, that is discussed with this position of public real, real property in the Arts District area. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Wibbly?
Aye.
Mr. Winn?
Aye.
Mr. Fray?
Aye.
Take your best shot.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, we wait, Paul. Can I just say this? The press has written about this. I don't know if he's coming back or not. He wrote about this, and he totally blew it.
He trashed it.
He trashed the deal, and he missed it, and he's not in here. The building circle deal. He needs to hear the briefing to put it out. Can we, can we see if he's here? Let's see if he's here.
Where's the press? Yeah.
I can do one air to get him, get him tied.
$200, seriously? What is it, $200? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, that was the-
That's what everybody was talking about. It's written oddly, it really is. So let's just make sure we get it right.
So it's probably there. There we go, okay. We didn't want to talk without you, we live in a room.
Okay.
All right. Now we're ready.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, members of council. So we have two items on the, two remaining items on the agenda tonight, the mid-year and five-year forecast, and we have Vision 2100, and I've already spoken with George. Vision 2100 is not time-sensitive, so we could move that to our, our next meeting if-
We've got a lot on the next meeting.
We have a lot, yes, we do. But under the agenda overview, there were a couple of questions for some items that are on the docket tonight. So what I'd like to do is spend a little bit of time with three items. One would be the St. Paul's revitalization area, which is R8. The other would be PH five and six, which relate to JCPenney. And then lastly, just a quick pop-up on the coastal character district, which- And then lastly, just a quick pop-up on the coastal character district, which I believe is PH 4, because that's on tonight. So, we want to make sure that we at least give you, and we're going to try our best to call them three-minute clips, to at least provide some backdrop on these four items tonight. So, with that said, Pete, why don't we start with R8, which is the St. Paul's revitalization area?
You have in front of you a resolution, Resolution 8. This is very, very quick. It designates an area of the greater St. Paul's area as what's called a revitalization area. So, these are the boundaries of the proposed revitalization area. Just to say a couple of things about this, there is no housing within the boundaries. There are no businesses within the boundaries. There is simply a fire station, there is a transfer center, and then there is a building that is going to be demolished as part of the St. Paul's Apartments project. And I want to emphasize the fact that this process of designating a revitalization area is really driven by state statute and state VHDA policy. But I want to back up and just talk a little bit about the vision. And this is not something that we pulled verbatim from Norfolk Plan 2030 or some of the other revitalization and transformation plans that are focused on this area, but it's a summary. And the summary, I'm not going to read it, you know, emphasizes the importance of building mixed-income communities replete with market rate and affordable housing options, as well as commercial job-generating activities, as well as a number of amenities. So.
Peter, why, why is it only in that boundary? You're calling it greater St. Paul's, but why is that boundary, why wouldn't we just go ahead and do the whole area? Just a question right now.
Right. So, when we took the initial crack at this, we did have a larger, a larger area that largely conformed to some prior plans. So, one was the St. Paul's Transformation Plant, which was completed a few years ago. That had a much bigger footprint than the Goody Clancy Plan that people refer to as the St. Paul's Plant. The reaction that we got suggested that there is some sensitivity around drawing boundaries. There was some confusion about what a revitalization area is versus a redevelopment and conservation area. So, we took a step back. We consulted with Mr. Riddick, who has been an important part of this process. And so, we came up with boundaries that we thought would accomplish two things. Number one, the boundaries would capture the site that we are focused on with a developer that's planning a 126-unit project. And it would also capture other parcels, thereby allowing us to say to VHDA that we have a true revitalization area, rather than just a site-specific plan. So, there had to be some measure of credibility to the, to the boundaries of this. Does that, does that answer your question? So, in order to facilitate development in this, in this area, and we see this as the first phase of a larger transformation, larger redevelopment effort, we've got to, we've got to leverage resources. We've got to put projects in this area in a position where they can leverage maximum financing and other, and other tools from public and private entities. So, the Virginia Housing and Development Authority is a critical source. VHDA is really the, it's the major player in the state in terms of community development finance. And they provide, they provide favorable, more favorable financing terms. They provide extra points in their evaluation of development projects that are applying for certain financing for projects that are located in designated revitalization areas. And it's important to point out that a revitalization area is not a redevelopment and conservation area. A redevelopment and, a redevelopment or redevelopment and conservation area would give a housing authority, for example, additional powers to use eminent domain, and that is not what this does. This is simply a statement that says that city council prioritizes this area for certain types of investment. And that is it.
Okay.
Questions?
Can I just, can you reiterate to us that none of this designation interferes with the overarching goal of multi-use, multi-economic? All the things that basically the plan that we didn't vote on initially proposed?
That's, that's correct. That's correct. And there, and I know there's been a lot of talk about the potential use of tax credits by one project that's slated for this area, but the benefits from VHDA, and again, this is driven by state policy, it goes beyond the tax credit program. So, for example, if a developer wanted to use one of what's called the REACH programs, so there are two REACH programs that are administered by VHDA. One is called the SPARC program, so it's the basic multifamily residential program. The other is the mixed-use, mixed-financed program. They're very popular programs. If, if a project or a developer pursuing a project wanted to get the most favorable terms from VHDA, one of the things they might pursue is designation as a revitalization area. So, so this has benefits beyond just the tax credit program. I wanted to make that very clear, because the discussion has been not clear in that, in that regard.
And Peter, I don't think the discussion has been clear, because there hasn't been much discussion about it. I mean, aside from it just popping up on the agenda, there hasn't been a lot of discussion about it. And if there was something that I would tell you that I was very disappointed about with this whole process, it would be that.
So, noted. We have had conversations with a number of individual and institutional stakeholders in the area, particularly faith-based organizations, civic, civic associations. We have not, we have not had large community meetings on this. But I think one also, and I appreciate that, that concern, one, one other perspective on this is that this represents a continuation of the discussions that we've had about, really, the first phase of revitalization. Discussions we've had with respect to the rezoning of, of the site, and also discussions with respect to the land disposition and development agreement. So, that's just another perspective that I wanted to share.
But from this point on, involving the revitalization?
Yes.
Or going forward with plans for the St. Paul quadrant, is that all stakeholders, public meetings, notices to the public will be well-planned out, so that we will not miss the business owners nor the residents of the Tijwater Garden?
Absolutely.
Area in our future planning for the St. Paul's quadrant.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, questions? So, and then there were some questions about PH 5 and PH 6, so Chuck is going to walk you through that.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Literally going to spend just a few minutes to talk about adding to the narrative about military circle and why it is that we are wanting to pursue some redevelopment, in particular with the JCPenney's building. This is a strategy, a longer strategy, that basically, when you think about what we're going to have to do in this entire 126 acres or so, that what is going to happen over the next 10 years or so is good planning by our planning department, by the stakeholders, the property owners, and the like. So, what do we do in the interim? What do we do while the period of time goes by that we have this asset that we might be able to bring some energy into and really bring a job-generation center as a component of what the overall strategy may be in the military circle area for future plans, longer-range plans? So, this really is a medium-term strategy, up to about 10 years. We want to activate this space and re-energize this site with a multi-tenanted office use. We know that people are wanting large floor plate areas. We know that we could bring some vitality to the military circle area while we vision out and come to conclusions for the bigger, better day. We also want to bring jobs and investment into the east side of the city. We think this is an opportunity to do that with a couple of the deals that we're working on, and we hope to drive future development in the area. Those are part of what would be then a longer-term strategy. Bigger picture is inclusive of this entire area, the mall and the Military Highway Quarter from Interstate 264 down Military to Virginia Beach Boulevard, and then back over to Kempsville Road. Much larger area than what we're talking about at the moment, but it has the real potential to become, as it is, one of the highest elevated points in the city, a real area with density, office, residential, some retail, not a peninsula center, but rather a more dense type of development. Why did we purchase, through the Economic Development Authority, the JCPenney's Building in December of 14? We really wanted to have a seat at the table. We know that people are going to be interested in this particular area. The control of up to 15 acres of property there in the military circle quarter assures us that we're going to have the ability to have a seat at that table and make a, an impact on what will ultimately happen in that area. We also knew it was a strategic investment. We bought it for 2.5 million, the assessment was 9 million. We get 210,000 square feet on two floors and 1,400 parking spaces in one of the most centrally-located areas in Hampton Roads. So, we do control 15 acres here in one of the most strategic central locations in our entire region. We also think that this gives us an opportunity to create an asset for the Economic Development Authority. It generates income. We have to act as if we were developers. We have to take a look at, just like a private developer would on every single line item as it relates to becoming a developer of this property through the Economic Development Authority. So, it will generate income. It also generates tax revenue in terms of not only through the people that will be populating this building in indirect ways, through the restaurants and the shops in the area, but also in revenue that will be generated from the companies that would populate the JCPenney's Building. Further, it does revitalize a deteriorating building. And when we looked at this, we knew that we had to replace systems inside the building and the like if we were going to have any kind of opportunity to put human beings into that building, other than dead storage space, in order to bring opportunities in revitalization during a period of time until we get a larger picture, a longer-range vision. What could we do with that building in the meantime? And that's the JCPenney's opportunity. We do have about 88,000 square feet of opportunity here with our first prospect for an operations center. I think this is important to note. There are about 700 to 800 jobs that are going to be put into this over a 36-month period of time. 650 employees immediately and another 250, so you do the math, it's actually higher than that. And they're actually talking about hiring more than just those initial 250. I'm not sure.
The press got it wrong? Well, it's in our, it's in our package.
Yeah, I think we estimated, we want it to be conservative on earlier estimates of 200 to 250 jobs. But we know that that's what they're targeting, this company is particularly targeting to bring on.
You mean new jobs?
New jobs. All new jobs.
Net jobs, not, not new to Norfolk jobs, like y'all like to tell us.
Well, all of them are new to Norfolk.
Well, they're all new to Norfolk, but new, but new and new to Norfolk is not, to me, is not the same thing. If there are two, if there are 200 people that they're going to hire, those, to me, are new jobs. The other people are new, and those are new to Norfolk. But if we have the ability to take 200 people off the employment, unemployment role, or if we have the ability to let 200 people apply for better jobs, therefore still filling 200 vacancies by people who may be unemployed, those are new jobs to me. But just transfer people is not new job.
That's correct. Yes.
So, what we're looking at is 650 jobs will be in Norfolk when this building opens, with another 250 coming within the next three years, is.
Yes. And that's into the 88,000 square feet that this particular company is interested in taking. We still have the ability to lease another 100,000 square feet and perhaps double those figures with another type, operation-type center opportunity.
The work that you will do, however, that the city will guarantee, involves the entire building and prepares the other half of the building for lease.
That's correct. That is exactly right, and that's what is very important here. We're going to go ahead and do the entire building. New HVAC systems, new roof.
You have to.
We have to, new generators. So, it can be populated in a multi-tenanted way. So, we think that, again, with this company's aggressive timeline, these things will be happening toward the end of the year. Next steps.
Let's be clear, 650 jobs in the next what?
As soon as we can complete the space.
Okay. And how long do you think that's going to?
Well, we hope to have them in there by the end of the year, no later than February of 2017.
Okay, less than a year.
Yes.
650 jobs. And then after that, we expect another 250.
That's correct, over the next 36 months. New hires.
Thank you.
For that company.
Man, that's 800 jobs, okay, right? 900, I don't know.
We continue to pursue, by the way, additional sources of funding for the project, and so we're still underway. And I'd like to stress that we're still in competition for another state relative to the competition for this company.
So, this is not an inked deal yet?
It's not inked yet, but we are.
We're not going to spend money till it's inked.
That's correct. I just want to.
So, somebody else could sweep under and take this from us.
You never know. I mean, it's not over till it's over, but we feel very good. The company has really been working closely with us. And then again, obviously, we have a matter for consideration to council this evening.
And we are protected in that. If they up and move, or whatever the case is, we are built in with contingencies for protection for the properties that we're offering them if.
Yes, ma'am.
They, within that contingency period of time, or in that period of time, they decide they want to do someplace else, we are protected.
We will have a lease with a term that they would have to honor the entire period of time that we're negotiating with them.
The money that goes into this, it's, we purchased this for 2.5 million, how many years ago?
2014, December of 2014.
This is our asset, and we're not partnering with anyone else. This is, we're doing this ourselves.
That's correct.
All right, the 3.5, go ahead.
Maybe as a point of clarification, the Economic Development Authority is doing this with basically a cosignature from the city of Norfolk in order to help us with our financing package.
To help the EDA make this happen?
That's correct.
Your board, did they vote this through?
Yes.
Were they, were they, did they vet it and have the opportunity to vet the numbers in this?
Absolutely.
Because your board are businessmen that, as I look around this table, and including myself, that we rely upon to vet this. Well, maybe so, but I am not somebody who is a numbers person, as, as the people on that are, and they vetted.
Yes, they did.
And they have approved this.
That's correct.
And so, the expectation that we will be off of this loan is what, five years?
We hope to be able to refinance in about a five-year period of time.
And the city's off at that point. Possibly off.
That's correct.
And any money that's being applied to this is not money that would go to raises for police officers.
Hang on, Chuck.
This is a different source. This is dedicated.
Dedicated, right. Exactly. And the, you mentioned that if we have 900 or 800 to 900 new employees in the military circle area.
Yes.
How much, and I know that you've made certain assumptions, because we have to do it, but you've given me that number before. Do you agree with me that, under your assumptions at economic development, they will spend 1.8 to 2 million dollars a year in the city of Norfolk, because they will be in that vicinity? Is that, is that true assumption, true number?
Yes, if you were to assume the same kind of indirect spending that we use on other downtown-type office users. That's correct. We extrapolate it from that study.
Doctor, it's direct, indirect.
This is prosecution, right?
As long as the people understand it, now I did it.
Did anybody communicate all this to the public? Because that story they broke was hard.
You know, we're still in negotiations, and we still have some sensitive matters, but I think this definitely will help.
At least this party televised. Can't get it wrong.
So Mayor and members of council, just, we'd like George to just come up and talk about one more item and then we'll be done for tonight, okay? One more item that you will vote on tonight, and that's dealing with the coastal character district.
So 10 minutes got to six and now down to two, so we'll see if we can get this in. As you all know, there are now three character districts in the city, downtown, traditional, and suburban. When we were developing Plan Norfolk 2030, we originally had designated East Beach and some of the areas there in the traditional that realized, as we moved through the adoption process, that wasn't going to be exactly appropriate. However, we did know that the coastal area is different and deserves to be treated in a different manner than the other parts of the city.
Did y'all hear that? Did y'all hear the "treated in a different..."
Sorry. So the City Planning Commission is recommending creating a fourth character district along the coast, and you have all of this before you, so I'm not, I'm just going to quickly run through it. Tonight you have the, the request before you is to amend Plan Norfolk 2030 to add the fourth character district, and then to amend the zoning ordinance to add the zoning, to add the character district into the zoning ordinance. What we have done to ease the transition is take all of the suburban, all of the things that apply in suburban character district and move them forward into the coastal character district because that's exactly what applies today. So this doesn't mean any change today or tomorrow for the coastal character district, but what it does is set up the opportunity for us to, as we move forward with the new zoning ordinance, to look at the coastal character district and particularly things with form and, and the types of architecture and patterns that we would be looking for, certainly look for something different. Got any questions? I'm glad to try to answer them, or if you think about them between now and upstairs, upstairs as well.
Thank you, George. Yeah, thank you, George, for, and they did get a lot of input on this as well, so...
We did.
Okay. Look, we've got a lot of stuff that we still got to get to, especially this five-year plan. The next meeting, there is an economic, there's a Finance and Economic Development Committee meeting scheduled at 4 o'clock. I'd like to start that at 3, or 3:30, depending on what the, what the agenda looks like.
What day will it be?
That's, we, I think it's on the 15th, isn't it? Isn't it the 15th? So if the committee could come in at Finance and Economic Development, and right now we'll say 3, depending on what we, we need to talk about, we can move it to 3:30, and then the whole council come in at 4. I'd also like to talk about some appointments.
The 8th?
No, we don't meet on the 8th.
Why isn't it the 8th?
We don't meet on, we meet on the 15th and the 22nd.
When did you guys change that calendar? Because the last calendar you gave us, I put all the dates in here.
My calendar says 15th. You missed that duty show, too.
Yeah, I know, gosh, you guys are going to keep me up.
So, and then if we come in at 4 o'clock, I want to do some appointments. We haven't done that in a while, we can catch up on some of them. And then we can do the five-year plan, and I don't know what else, Marcus, but that's plenty of stuff.
Sure.
I think it's too soon to get the medical complex, the medical guys in here. You're going to want to make sure that briefing is well-done before...
We're going to do something about regionalism.
Come in, too, if you want.
Oh, yeah. I'm good.
I can't.
But we did talk about pushing that in.
Yes. We're trying to do it on the 22nd. All right? And I, I could, I get to make that presentation.
So you do that off the top.
Okay, well, that's it, and we'll take a break. All right?